Yeah.
Are we ready now? We'll see. So right now we are, so. We'll see if we have any more technical difficulties, so. Yes, you're welcome. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Truth in Taxation meeting. All right, Mayor Council, public goes and in attendance. We had some technical difficulties earlier, so I'm hoping that's it doesn't happen, but if it does, we'll we'll find a way even to make it through, so. Along with myself tonight, we've got Andy Reid and Justin Jurgensen from our Finance Department, the Finance Director and Assistant Finance Director. We'll do our best to walk everyone through the proposed budget and tax levy for 2022. Quick agenda for tonight, we'll talk a little bit about the budget process to date. And we'll go over some general truth and taxation hearing information. We'll look at some comparisons. I'll talk about property taxation one oh one. We'll touch on the tax levy and general fund budget, enterprise fund budgets, our capital improvement and debt management plans. And then we'll just talk, kind of sum it all up and then talk about our next steps. So as we dive into it, city council staff have had five public work sessions over the past seven months. The first work session on the budget taking place back in May with our last one taking place at our last council meeting. City council adopted the preliminary budget and tax levy in September. The truth of taxation notices were mailed off to the property owners last month. And so this will actually be our sixth actual public hearing on the budget for 2022. So the purpose of tonight's meeting, this is the annual truth and taxation hearing. The main purpose of this hearing is to enhance the public participation in the property tax system by allowing a public forum to to one, discuss the budget, two, discuss the proposed tax levies, to explain increases and then to hear public comments and questions on the budget and tax levy. This is a state requirement by law. We are to conduct this this meeting and we do every year and attendance wise, this is about the normal attendance, so obviously it's being broadcast on TV and in front of the council here tonight. And so I know it usually catches more eyes than just those that are in attendance here. So tonight, this is the truth and taxation hearing. If there's a need for a continuation hearing, we'll have that at our council meeting on December fourteenth. Then the final budget and tax levy will be adopted by the city council and they need to be certified to the county by December thirtieth. So that's kind of the process that that we are in. I'll touch on some just general hearing information. Always like to point this out, the source of the data is the city of Hutchinson unless not otherwise, and they usually try to note that on on the slides that we go through. Reminder, and we don't have a big crowd tonight, but I always like to do this. Tonight we discuss the city's share of of individuals twenty twenty proposed tax bill, not property values. This is my twentieth year of giving a truth and taxation hearing. And this might be the first time I've given it where somebody wasn't here to talk about property values, to be disappointed than to turn around and walk out. But with that being said, I do want to talk a little bit about the process and where we're at. If somebody did happen to want to question their their property value, the best time to do that is in that April or May time period, when you when you receive your valuation notice is usually in March. Then there is the the right to a board of appeals in your evaluation. We do an open book meeting, which means we essentially have the county assessor's office has a quote unquote, open book meeting where residents can come in and discuss the evaluations and have an opportunity to have their evaluations reconsidered at that at that timeframe. Once again, that usually takes place April, May. We're in the the December portion of our cycle. And so tonight, the discussion is on the budget and the tax levy only. And once again, that's on the city's share of that portion. But briefly, just more of an educational piece, in Minnesota, the market value of a property is determined by January second of the year prior to the year in which taxes on that property are due. In other words, market values for taxes that are payable in twenty two or twenty twenty two were set in January of twenty twenty one. That's how our system operates. You're always kind of a year behind. And property values are on statements recently received are based off of home sales from October of two thousand nineteen to September of twenty twenty. And I'll have a slide here, my next one. I think that's important to remember is most of the evaluations, most of it is based off of sales that are going on within the community. And some of that falls back into requirements of state law and what's required of local assessors on where values need to be placed. And so that's important to remember. Now, that doesn't mean that you can't have your value changed. There's a process that you can go through, but when we see large increases in values, a lot of times it's either you've done some sort of improvement in your home and or we're seeing value increases within the community. So property owners receive new notices of market values from the assessor in March, April of twenty twenty two. I mean, questions on that evaluation should be addressed at the open book meeting, once again, kind of April, May, June timeframe. So with that being said, here's just a little graph on where we're seeing median home values. The twenty twenty one number, that's based off of sales through October of this year. And so you've seen, we've seen already a twenty percent, twenty one percent increase in median home values from twenty twenty to twenty twenty one. And so that will have an impact on valuations that come out next year. And we've had valuations more than double since really our low point in in twenty twenty two. So I think if any of us got our tax base statements and looked at our values, we've seen probably a pretty large increase in our value. And that's just reflective of what's going on within the community right now. Obviously, these are these are record high property home values for for Hutchinson. We've never seen anything this hot this high. I think late two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we were probably in that one fifty, one sixty range. And then we had the the market crash and two thousand twelve was our low year for values. So first off, the preliminary tax levy that was set in September by the city council and the property tax effect or the statement you've got in the mail showed a city tax increase of seven percent. That time the preliminary budget was balanced. The revised budget that we're going to be discussing tonight includes a four point two percent tax levy increase in a balanced budget. The city has adjusted its revenue and expense projections and roughly and eliminated roughly two hundred twelve or two hundred twelve thousand in taxes since the preliminary budget was adopted in September. And we'll talk a little bit more on where those reductions took place. So I usually like to touch on a little bit of just some comparison. We like to kind of look at where Hutchinson stands and in comparison to a couple of different things. I think one of the biggest frustrations I hear is how Hutchinson has one of the highest taxes in the state. Now, remember, we're talking just about city taxes. I can't, we can't deal with what the county does, with the school district does. We're talking about city taxes, but that's just not factually accurate when it comes to city taxes. When we look at Hutchinson, the the fellow McLeod County cities, we have the second lowest tax rate. I've got what our twenty twenty one average city tax rate was, what that rate would be based off of our preliminary tax levy and then what the rate's going to look like based off of our proposed tax levy. So when we compare ourselves to other cities within McLeod County, we have the second lowest tax rate. Now, when we compare ourselves to other outstate regional centers, we do have the fifth highest city tax rate. These are the nineteen small regional centers that we compare ourselves to on a year in a year out basis. This doesn't include like St. Cloud or Mankato, Duluth or Moorhead areas, some of those larger outstate regional centers. These are small regional centers. And so when you look at the regional centers we compare ourselves to, we are in the high end. I will point out that the statewide city average is seventy four point one nine percent. So realistically, we're probably right in the middle of the pack when it comes to city tax rates throughout the the state of Minnesota. It depends on where, who you want to compare yourself to. Except you compare yourselves to other McLeod County cities. We're on the low side. You compare yourselves to state regional centers, we're on the high side. But we're below the statewide average of seventy four point one nine percent. We've gradually kind of moved up that. I think back in fifteen or sixteen, we were the third or fourth highest. We've moved down a couple notches since then over the years. Just a couple of other things I'd like to point out, and this is based off of two thousand nineteen census information. We don't have twenty twenty data yet. We have population, but some of the other stuff hasn't come out. But when we look at the other regional centers, we have the second lowest percentage of the population below the poverty level. And I always say this, you know, it's nine percent. Anything over zero percent in my mind is is too much. But when we're comparing to other outstate regional centers, the second lowest. We have the fourth highest median household income, the seventh highest median home value. Now, what we do is we compare ourselves with the census. And the census is always a couple of years behind when it comes to home values. I just showed you one that showed our median home value at two hundred and twenty four thousand and the census is at one forty nine. But to kind of compare ourselves across the board evenly, we we use census data when it comes to the outstate regional centers. Our LGA payment for twenty twenty one is it was at about two point six five million. That's the third lowest of outstate regional centers. Now, a lot of that has to do with the formula and we have a newer housing stock. And so that newer newer housing stock, higher median income, those all play a part in that that formula. It's established at the at the state and how we receive our LGA payments. The preliminary, based off of preliminary numbers, the two thousand twenty two statewide proposed property tax increase for cities on average, they were looking at a six point six percent increase. That's the preliminary. Remember, our preliminary numbers were at seven percent. Now, generally, that number will come down a little bit by the time those are finalized in December. I think last year it was at two and a half percent and ended the year at two point one percent, so. This is just a graph that we usually like to show that shows the growth in our tax base compared to that of our our levies that we set, both the general fund and the total levy. The the blue line is the general fund levy, the green line is the tax levy, and the red is our tax base. And what this is meant to do is simply show that our tax base is outgrowing the level of our tax increases that we've been doing over the past several years. One of the metrics that we'd like to show is the the price of government. And this is the percent of every dollar earned going to pay for city services, and that excludes electric and and gas and utilities. You know, this is a formula that's used that's used where it's the the capital per capita personal income times the population divided by the city revenue. Now, you're going to see a very large or I would say a pretty significant decrease from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, that two point seven, two point four percent. Couple of things to keep in mind. One, twenty twenty was a COVID year. We had a lot of our revenue with the city decrease. So that's going to, if I'm going to be honest with the graph and why there was a a pretty high percentage decrease. One was a COVID year. Two, we have a, we we do have twenty twenty census data, and so that went up by four hundred in population. And then also, we did see a pretty significant increase in our per capita income within the community. That went up seven and a half percent. And so all of that plays into, I would caution that little number mainly because of the amount of revenue that came in in twenty twenty that was, I would say, altered due to to COVID. We had a pretty significant decrease in revenue because we didn't have our parking wrecks programs open throughout the years. All of that plays into into that calculation. But generally, we were trying to show a price of government that's hopefully not increasing. And you can see obviously the recession years of 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 eight, nine and ten, that that number was going up, but it steadily declined since then.
So Matt, how will the CARES Act affect that? We have, have we gotten any money from that yet?
Yeah, we received.
Received this year's share, fifty percent of of one point four eight million, I think it is, or?
Actually, it might be over one point five million. Now, the state distributed extra muddies to cities here in the last month or so. But we did receive the first half here in July.
But with no decisions having been how to use that one yet?
Correct.
Okay, correct.
And that will probably be, we'll probably be coming to the council the first quarter of twenty twenty two on how to do that. We're, I think we're kind of wrapping our arms around what the requirements are. And I think we've have some pretty good ideas. But that will will be limited, if you wanted to say, on what we can spend that money on.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And I guess with that, we haven't factored any of that money into our twenty twenty two budget. Correct, just because of kind of where that needs to be spent.
So that's sitting in a reserve then?
Yes, yes. So just talk a little bit about property taxation one oh one. I think most of us realize we have a pretty complicated system, especially here in Minnesota. And so I like to try to spend a little bit of this time doing a little bit of work to try to explain it, even though you really probably need several classes or hours to to go into detail on how that system is set up. One thing I do like to always highlight is that in the League of Minnesota Cities came out with this several years ago, that there are really fourteen reasons property taxes vary from year to year. I usually like to highlight the three that we are responsible for as a city. That being obviously the city budget and tax levy that may change. A special districts budget levy may change. That would be our EDA, HRA. While we have separate boards that set those, this council has the final say in what those numbers are. And so that's why I highlight that. And then if there's any special assessments that may be added to a property tax, those are really the three that we have some type of control over. Some of the other factors include, you know, if you own a township, you know, township's budget levy. Obviously, we're impacted by the the county budget and the levy that they set. The school district's budget levy may impact us. And then there's several factors that may take place at the state level, or there may be changes in property value that we touched on previously. But I think it's important to remember, there's several different factors that may impact some of its property tax statement. With that, Minnesota's property tax system is based off of five components. One being the local property tax levy, that's obviously the city, but there's also the school district, the county that that impact local property tax rates. The second aspect is property tax classification rates. That's set by the state of Minnesota. So every property in the state of Minnesota is is classified or assigned a classification rate. And those taxes range from zero point two five percent to two percent. What I mean by that is that if you own residential homestead or property, you have a classification rate of one percent. If you own a commercial property, that might be anywhere from one point five to two percent. So Minnesota has set up a taxing system in which basically, they made the the decision that those that create revenue, they get a higher portion of the tax bill. And so I think that's one thing to keep in mind when we set tax rates, that they may disproportionately affect commercial industrial, not because it's necessarily anything that we did, because that's but that's because that's the way Minnesota has set up its tax system. I think there's what, fifteen or sixteen different classifications?
More than.
Maybe more than that. And so, but they range anywhere from that zero point two five percent to to two percent. Once again, that's set by the state based off of the type of building that you may own, whether it's commercial or residential, homestead, non-homestead, rental.
Apartments.
Apartments. Yeah, they're all assigned a a a different classification system. The third component is, the third component is property value. Once again, that's based off of property sales along with some other factors, including obviously the type of property that you have, and that's set by the county assessor. Fourth component is tax credits. Only certain properties get those, and those are generally non-residential. And then the state general tax, and that's set by the state, and those are generally assigned mainly to commercial and industrial properties. So how we set our, how a tax rate is set, Hutchinson's property tax rate is set by taking the city's tax levy and dividing that by our total tax capacity. Now, tax capacity is really all the properties in the city, the value that's assigned to that based off of their classification rate. Like I said, it's clear as mud, right? Once again, each property is signed at a classification rate depending on its use by the state legislature. Properties associated with income production, commercial industrial have a higher classification weight than other properties. The city's total tax capacity is an accumulation of all the parcels within within the city minus adjustments that may occur. So that thirteen thousand one ninety six nine sixty nine, that's the city's projected tax or my that we're looking to collect in two thousand and, no, I'm sorry. That's the the tax capacity, the nine, seven thousand nine hundred fifty three, that's the taxes that we are looking to collect next year. And that's how you get your your local tax rate. Now, that tax rate is then assigned to every property in Hutchinson. So if we're looking at, I'll use another example. In this case, a home is valued at two hundred thousand. Now, there'll be an exclusion there. I'll touch on that a little bit, a little bit later. That's the state's way to basically provide tax relief to residential properties. Times your classification rate. Once again, that's a residential property, times your city tax rate. So a home that's valued at two hundred thousand, Hutchinson is expected to pay a city tax of about one thousand ninety dollars. That same home in Glencoe would be paying one thousand three hundred forty two dollars, and Wednesday, one thousand three hundred fifty, based off of the tax rates they established. So I'm hoping some of this makes some sense. So as we look at the property tax rate and what's being proposed for twenty twenty two, once again, I noted that when we came to you in September, we had a, the levy that was a the preliminary levy that was adopted by the city council had a seven percent tax levy increase. And we saw the impact that that had on, we're trying to use a home that's valued at twenty, at two hundred thousand dollars. We're expecting to see about a sixty two dollar increase with that proposed levy. What's being presented tonight is a four point two percent property tax levy increase with the impact of about thirty three dollars on a home that's valued at two hundred thousand. Now, if your value happened to not change from two thousand and twenty to two, or two thousand twenty one to two thousand twenty twenty two, you can expect about a decrease of eleven dollars if we had not raised property taxes. And I'm sorry, and there was just a general increase. If you if you hadn't, what's that decrease? And I add that's forty three dollars. Would have to decrease about forty three dollars had your value not increased. Had it increased and we not raised a levy, you would have, you would have seen about an eleven dollar decrease in your property taxes. Well, this is just to kind of give a comparison on the different options that we considered when it came to property tax levies and the impact it would have had on a property here in town. Once again, this is just the city's portion. I think sometimes we'll lose sight that you also are paying county taxes, school district taxes, taxes, EDA, HRA, and district, what's the regional?
Region five.
Region five or six or whatever that is. Those are all the taxes I could collect here in Hutchinson. Just to touch briefly on the homestead exclusion, this was done in two thousand twelve, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. The state repealed the market value homestead credit and replaced it with the market value exclusion. The market value exclusion reduced the city's collected taxes with the state funding in the shortfall. The state budget cuts resulted in the city's not receiving an entire levy amount. That's what the, I guess, the exclusion does. And what that does, what that means is that excludes taxation forty percent of the first seventy six thousand dollars of the property's value. Once again, this is the state's way of providing tax relief. So if your values, if you're, the value of your home is at two hundred thousand, there's going to be, you're only going to get taxed for, what was that, nineteen thousand? That's that. So you're only going to get taxed for a hundred eighty one thousand. Examples up here, if your home's valued at a hundred and forty four thousand, you're only being taxed at a home value of a hundred nineteen thousand. And so that was the relief that the state set up in two thousand twelve. One downfall, and what they didn't share with a lot of people, is all it did was basically spread the burden out to other properties within the city. And that's where you saw tax rates increase from maybe two thousand eleven to two thousand twelve, if cities didn't reduce budgets back at that time. So I know this is a lot of information, but I'm trying to paint the picture of all the different facets that go into a property tax that an owner may pay. And obviously, we are responsible for a portion of that. That's the budget and the tax levy that we're discussing tonight. Something to keep in mind, and this plays into both our tax rate and the taxes a property owner may pay. We've seen a significant increase in value. And this graph just shows the the value, the history of our market value and how that's increased. You'll see our two thousand twenty one numbers, that's eleven point two percent increase from twenty twenty. And that was on top of a five point nine percent increase from nineteen to twenty. And so we've had a pretty significant increase in in our value. We've seen average growth since two thousand thirteen of about four and a half percent. And our twenty twenty one value is about forty eight percent higher than our two thousand thirteen value. And so that's good. We're we're seeing growth within the community. The downside is, is that is also bringing up the the value of all the different properties within town, which has an impact on the taxes that you pay. Obviously, we're responsible for the levy portion of of those taxes. Just taking a quick look at your twenty twenty tax bill and your twenty twenty one tax bill, I always like to highlight this just to to try to emphasize, there's more than just the city's portion that you're paying for. You can see the percentage of the actual, so when you're paying your tax bill, roughly thirty five percent of that is going to the city. That's decreased slightly over the years. Another thirty two percent is going to the county. When you take into account the school's debt and their operating levies, it's about thirty percent. And then you can see the 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 smaller portions that go to the EDA, the HRA, and the region sixty. So with some of that background, we're going to get into the proposed twenty twenty two tax levy and the general fund budget. Always want to highlight our mission statement, which is up on the screen here. As I've noted, both the staff and with the council, and I share this every year, I think the budget is one of the biggest policy decisions that the city council makes on a year in and year out basis. And that's what we're doing. We're establishing a policy, which is our budget. That's basically the whole purpose behind this meeting tonight is to get input from the public on establishing that policy, what we know as the budget. With that, we've established budgets. There's six core areas of focus. This goes right into our mission statement. But we're looking at public safety, health and recreation, transportation, economic development, the environment, and good government. Those six core areas, I can point to every aspect of our budget that's going to one of those six, if not more, or if not more than one of those six areas that we are focusing on year in and year out basis. So with that, what's being proposed for tax levies for twenty twenty two? Our general fund, we're looking at a five point six million dollar general fund tax levy increase. That's an increase of three point two percent from twenty twenty one. We have a thirty thousand dollar tax abatement levy. Once again, that goes back to the the abatement that we gave Oupenord when they moved into to the community. That was a decision that was made by a council back in eighteen, nineteen? Two thousand eighteen. So that's four, how long is that abatement for? You remember, is it eight years or fifteen years?
Fifteen.
Fifteen years. So I think we're in year three of that of that tax abatement. And that was a recruitment tool we used to bring Oupenord to the the community. Our debt funds, we're projecting a levy at two point three four million. That's a six point seven percent increase from twenty twenty one. The biggest, or the biggest reason for that increase is the new police station that that we are building and the debt that's associated with that. And I'll dive into that in a little bit more detail, we'll go later. The EDA is recommending a levy increase of of two hundred and eighteen thousand, which is a nine percent increase, or about an eighteen thousand dollar increase from twenty twenty one. The HRA is looking at a four percent increase from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two with a total tax impact of just over eight point, or about eight point three eight million, which is a four point three percent increase. Once again, we're responsible really for the general fund, tax abatement, and the debt fund levy. fund levy. We have to okay the EDA and the HRA levies that those boards bring forward requests to the, to the city council. So with what's changed, we're in the preliminary phase, we were looking at a seven percent increase, and now you're looking, or a seven percent increase in the, in the city's total fund, the total tax impact of seven percent, that has since been reduced to four point two and four point three percent. This is just kind of a graph that highlights the various different, what our debt levy will be going to, to pay for in, in two thousand twenty-two. You'll notice that the increase, the recent increase related to the police facility. This is just a comparison, looking back at the last roughly ten years on our tax levy and where that's gone. We've had an average increase in our tax levy of two point two percent since two thousand and twelve. Last five years, we've seen a two point seven percent increase, two point four, three percent, two point one, and a two point four percent increase. And obviously, we're looking at a four point three percent increase in, in two thousand twenty-two, we take into account the EDA, the HRA, the debt service, and the general tax abatement portion of it. Proposed two thousand twenty-two tax levy includes the seventh straight year of an increase in our general fund portion of the levy since two thousand twelve. Proposed two thousand twenty-two tax levy includes the first year of an increase in our debt fund portion of the levy since two thousand and sixteen. Once again, it's a six point seven percent increase. Compared to two thousand twenty-two, the city's total tax levy has increased twenty-four point two percent. Once again, that's an average of about two point two percent. Our two thousand twenty-two city tax levy accounts for per capita tax of five hundred and forty-five dollars, up from five hundred and thirty-four dollars in two thousand twenty-one. Additional information on the city's tax rate, the city's growth in tax capacity, which went up ten and a half percent, continues to outpace the tax levy. Growth resulted in a decrease in city tax rate. The two thousand twenty-two city tax rate is expected to be three point six one percent lower than our two thousand twenty-one tax rate. And Hutchinson's city tax rate has decreased each year since two thousand fourteen. Reason that we highlight our tax rate is that our financial management plan says it's one of the goals of the city is to have tax rates that either try to remain steady or at a lower rate than the previous year. And so when staff develops the budget, that's one of the focuses that we, we have along with, obviously, being the needs of the community. Mean home value, you see a thirty-three city dollar, or city tax bill increase based on estimate nine point two percent growth in value. Once again, that, those value increases may be all over the board within the community. Now, a property possibly might see a city tax increase if the value does not increase at the same rate as the median home value, or could see a decrease. Once again, a property valued at one hundred eighty-six thousand in two thousand twenty-one with the same value in two thousand twenty-two would actually see a sixty-nine percent decrease in the city tax bill. Now, the reality is, is I'd be pretty surprised if values aren't increasing. So it's a double-edged sword. Values increase, that means you're paying a, a bigger portion of the tax levy. Now, hopefully, we're not increasing tax levies at a rate that that is an exorbitant amount, but, so I don't know what's good. I mean, if you're trying to sell your home, the value increase is great. If you don't want to see, if you're not in the business of trying to sell your home, you're likely not wanting to see value increases, because that has an impact. So really, there's two things that are going on within the community. What we're setting for a tax levy is having an impact, and the increase in values within the community, which is based off of sales going on, is impacting that, those same, or is impacting those tax levy increases as well. This is just a ten-year look at what our tax rate has done, and once again, looking back, you've seen that steady decline in the tax rate since two thousand and fourteen. Looking at proposed general fund revenues for two thousand twenty-two, you'll see that three point two percent increase in property taxes that we just highlighted. The other taxes, the increase in that, that's the taxes that come for lodging tax. And then we also have a franchise tax with our cable companies in town, so that's where those taxes come from. Now, those get redirected to other entities, one being the, the Visitor's Bureau, and the other go into local access. We're rejecting a sixteen point six percent increase in licenses and permits, and that's mainly to do with the continued growth that we're expecting to see within the building community. So most of that growth is just more homes, more businesses being constructed, and we're expecting additional revenue coming from that. Intergovernmental revenue is staying relatively flat, that's, intergovernmental revenue is our local government aid, and any other type of state aid that we may get, whether it's highway funds, bridge funds, I think there's PRA funds that we get. Charges for service are expected to be relatively flat, that's anytime you're paying to use a city facility, whether it's the aquatic center, renting a shelter, that's where things like charges for service come into play. Fines and forfeitures are remaining flat. Miscellaneous revenue, we're not expecting to see a pretty, any significant changes in that. And then transfers in is remaining relatively flat as well. Once again, transfers in is the money that we get from Hutch Utilities, from the liquor store, from Creekside, that all takes into account into our transfer incomes. Overall, we're looking at a two percent increase in revenues within our general fund for next So highlight a little bit more, where is that revenue coming from, roughly forty percent of our general fund is from property taxes? And I would say we're generally in the thirty to forty percent, at least from the time that I've been here, so we're not seeing any significant changes in that. Another twenty percent comes from transfers in. Charges for service are twenty percent, intergovernmental revenue is thirteen percent, and licenses and permits are roughly three percent of the revenue that we see that goes into our, our general fund. Both percentages have remained, have remained pretty consistent over, over the years. Some additional facts on the general fund revenues, the general fund includes a three point two percent tax levy increase, that's equivalent of about one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. As I noted, property taxes account for about forty percent of our general fund revenues. Pilot payment from Hutch Utilities is remaining steady. I think last year was the last year of a three-year increase in revenue from them. And that, well, obviously, we'll continue to look at that on a year-in, year-out basis. The year four, five of fees and out are HSA funding from our self-insure, from our self-insurance. We are, we do have a ten percent increase from Creekside, it's expected coming into our general fund this year. And once again, projecting a sixteen point six percent increase in licenses and permits due to building activity. We are seeing an LGA increase of just over sixty-five thousand dollars, however, that was offset with the loss of our E nine-one-one money. That was money that we got from the state for the dispatch center that we have. Obviously, we have gotten out of the business of being a dispatcher, we'll no longer receive that, that money. One thing to note is that the allocation of the LGA between our general fund and our capital projects fund was changed to a fifty-fifty split, which we were in, I think, fifty-one, forty-nine. We simply did a fifty-fifty split just to be consistent, and so there's a clear policy moving forward with that. Parking and rent fee increases, we are expecting some increases in regular, going back to regular programming, are expected to bring in additional about fifty-four thousand dollars in revenue next year. Always we're expecting most of our other revenue sources to remain relatively flat. Once again, a one percent increase to the general fund is going up just over fifty-four thousand dollars. Taking a look at our general fund expenses, wages and benefits are expected to go up about two point one percent. Supplies, about five point nine percent. Now, that takes, you know, you look at supplies, that's things like fuel. Obviously, we've seen fuel increase over the past year and impact that will have, and then just some, I think some general costs for higher repair and maintenance that's being scheduled for next year. Miscellaneous expenses are going up four point four percent. We've allocated an additional twenty-five thousand to our fleet funding, as we've talked about that in the past, that's kind of lagging behind, and so we've gradually started to increase the funding for that. The transfers out, that's the city's share of the HAZ facility. So that one hundred and ten thousand, that's our cost of, for the HAZ facility. Overall, similar to our revenue increase, we're expecting a two percent increase in general fund expenses for next year. Just comparing two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two, and where those monies get allocated, once again, these percentages are relatively the same for the different functions. I think the one thing to, to keep in mind when you look at this, you know, streets and highways may seem low, but they're roughly sixty percent, I think, of our capital improvement fund, so just to keep that in mind, that's where a lot of those big costs come from. But percentage-wise, allocation between two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two is relatively the, the same. This is with the, just taking a quick look back at our general fund budget history. I think the low years are, are relative to where we're at, our local government payment and the cut that we have. There was an increase from two thousand fourteen to two thousand fifteen, and that's when we took on security at the hospital. Obviously, they reimbursed us for those costs. There was another jump in fifteen to sixteen, and those are, I think we added back a couple more employees after the recession. There was a large jump from sixteen to seventeen, and that's the addition of the aquatic center. And so a lot of those expenses were offset with revenue back in the aquatic center. And then there's been some additional, I guess you'd want to say jumps, and that's mainly hiring back some employees. I think we had eliminated roughly eighteen employees during the recession, hired a lot of those back. We're still about ten employees below where we're at in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, but a lot of that has plays into the increases in our general fund budget over the years, along with growth in wages and benefits. Some additional facts on the general fund expenses, wages and benefits increased by just over one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, that's two point one percent. This includes performance annual adjustments, doesn't include the removal of the dispatch center. We're looking at one full-time employee in DMV. The state has changed the, the way that DMVs operate, and just put some added pressure on me to have more staff in there to handle those operations. And as we talked about at our last meeting, it does include higher wages for seasonal part-time staff. As we noticed last year, we were paying people ten bucks an hour, it was difficult for us to recruit the fellows with issues. And so we've adjusted, and we're planning to adjust our part-time seasonal pay to tune up about eighty thousand dollars next year to, to pay those employees more. We're still below what I would say probably the market is in our community, but I think it's at a competitive level for, for government. One thing to keep in mind, that wages and benefit account for about sixty-eight percent of our general fund expenses. We are in the business of hiring people. We don't have machines that do widgets, we're heavily people-centered, so sixty-eight percent of our general fund expenses go to pay for wages and benefits of the employees that we have. That's the largest expense by far in our general fund. We've been right around that sixty-eight percent ever since I've been here, so that's fairly normal. We've got, as we noted, we increased funding for our fleet replacement by twenty-five thousand dollars. We have slight supply costs going up by about fifty-two thousand dollars due to higher fuel cost expectations and need for parts and repairs. I would say departments have held budgets relatively flat, other than wages and benefits, and the two thousand twenty-two budget expenses are balanced with, with revenues. I'll touch on just a little bit, our two thousand twenty-two tax, our enterprise funds and budgets. Once again, these aren't paid for by property taxes, these are all user fees or revenue generated, but I think it's important, we have the final say on it, just to highlight it. So you'll see liquor revenue and expenses, that's obviously Hutch Liquor. We're expecting to continue to see another good year within that. You'll see an increase, a recent increase in compless revenue and expenses, the revenue is on the, help me out, the, yeah, the, yeah, the big con that's coming back. I would say if you're seeing large increases in expenses like refuse, that's for capital improvements out at Creekside, Creekside. Or water, where we had most of those expenses covered this year, both water and wastewater, and then stormwater revenue and expenses are going up too. I think the important thing to note is just where we're at with cash, cash balances on that. And I think the one thing to report is that all of our enterprise funds are healthy, they have healthy cash balances, they have healthy cash flows. If there's a negative cash flow, it's because we're doing a major capital project or capital improvement, and we have cash on reserves to pay for those improvements. Some just additional facts, liquor Hutch and Creekside continue to do well and contribute six hundred and seventy thousand to the general fund in two thousand twenty-two. Our budget for next year have no increases in garbage, water, sewer rates. The last time we raised garbage rates was in two thousand eight, and the last time we increased water and sewer rates was in two thousand eleven. Now, we are looking at that fee schedule, and at this point, we're planning on adjusting rates in two thousand twenty-three, but there will be no impact on the two thousand twenty-two budget. There's a slight rate increase in our stormwater rates. Transfers to our general fund from the enterprise funds will be at eight hundred and twenty thousand in two thousand twenty-two, that's about roughly six percent of the revenue that we collect within our general fund. And you include the money that we get from HUC, that's up to about two point seven nine dollars. We're seeing a lot more capital needs due to the aid of the facilities that are kind of starting to increase up there. With that, we'll jump into the proposed two thousand twenty-two capital improvement plan and our debt management plan. This is our five-year CIP plan, we're looking at just over fifty-two point three eight million. Obviously, you see a pretty significant dollar amount in two thousand twenty-two, that's really the second half of all the construction of our new police facility. It's about five million dollars smaller than our previous CIP. We average about ten point four eight million, and that's about roughly twenty to twenty-five percent of our budget expenses. Once again, our capital improvement plan, those are large items that we budget for year-in, year-out basis, that's your facilities, your snowplows, really anything of what we would consider to be a capital item is included in that. And so as you look at the, the five-year plan, where is that money going? Just over twenty-one million, roughly forty percent is going to improvements within our infrastructure. That's your new streets, your reclaims, even our street light retrofits. We have another roughly twenty-five percent, or just over thirteen million, go into our enterprise funds, so that's improvements at Creekside, liquor store, the water plant, sewer plants, wastewater plant, storm sewer system. Another thirteen percent is going to improvements in public safety, most of that is in the new police station, but also includes vehicles and equipment. Public works outside of infrastructure, so things like airports, cemetery, vehicles, trails, sidewalks, parking lots, it's about eleven percent, or five point four million. Park and rec, over the next five years, looking at another five million investment in that, and then includes everything from the new roof and facade at the civic center, to any improvements that we may do at the event center, or within our parks, our library. And then just generally, the general government, we have some admin technology updates, and that includes updates to this facility, and then with, we're in need of replacing some of our election equipment, and that's roughly two percent of our capital plan. Where does it come from? Roughly seventeen million over the next five years, we come from debt, that's included within our debt management plan. Another fourteen million comes from the revenue that's collected out of our enterprise funds, so that's fees that are being paid for water, sewer, stormwater, wastewater, and then any revenue that's collected from Creekside or the liquor store. About ten million of that is taxes, not necessarily new taxes, but it's money from our tax lady that gets designated towards capital projects, that's about one point eight five million every year, about two million, it's about twenty percent of our overall levy. Our overall levy goes, is assigned to capital projects. It could come from capital from balances. Special assessments will pay for about $4.41 million of that. That's the direct cost that we assign to property owners that may be adjacent to a project. We're expecting to get about another $6 million in grants and aids to help pay for some of those projects, including donations. And then we've got special funds, whether it's hutch utilities or some of our cooperative agreements. That will kick in to pay for the rest of those costs within our five-year CIP. When we look at next year, once again, that's the roughly $18 million that we're looking at. The infrastructure is being planned for, we're looking at school road, Sunset Avenue, Linden Avenue, Sunset Street, and Neal Avenue, along with some seal coating and starting our LED light retrofit project. We've got another $4 million next year, it's going to facility upgrades. I mean, obviously, you see the $6 million there for public safety, that's the new police station. Parking wreck, the $2.23 million extra, most of that is, I think $1.6 million of that is at the civic arena for the new roof and the facade. Another $3.1 million at public works, a lot, a big chunk of that is for the money that we're hoping to get from the state for the HAZ facility. And then we, once again, we have some upgrades to this building and election equipment planned for next year as well. So as we look at our debt management plan, obviously, outside of wages and benefits, the other probably big impact for next year's budget is the debt and what's being planned with the new police station. And so the 2022 debt management plan increases our previous target limit of $2.6 million, and that's to account for the debt that's being associated with the new police station. On this graph up here, the yellow represents the debt that we are taking on with the building of the new police station. That red line was our previous target. That just has to do with what we had set aside and planned for for infrastructure and facility improvements. Once again, we added the police station in the last year. 2022 will be the first year of an increase in our debt levy since 2016. Low interest rates in recent years have allowed for higher project limits. The main reason for the higher tax levy increase proposed for next year, once again, is that police station. With that being said, that number has gone down from September. The city's plan using $1 million in reserves to soften the levy impact for 2022. And the, obviously, that also softens the future need for borrowing with the police station. And that was a change from what we did in September, what we presented to the council and the public in September. To be transparent, and just because a lot of questions have come up, just talk about the police station a little bit. The new police facility, this includes a new department, along with the new police department, and also includes a new department of motor vehicle office and emergency operations center, EOC. The new facility will also house all of our vehicles inside. As we've talked about, policing has changed quite a bit in 20 years. The technology that's inside of a vehicle wasn't there 20, 30 years ago and is really in need of being in a place that's climate-controlled. That was one of the biggest reasons that we built the new police station. Outside of some additional space was but to get those vehicles in an enclosed garage. The total current project cost right now, we're at $3.96 million. That includes the cost that it took for us to obtain the land that we're building on. And the funding sources to help pay for that. $3 million came from the $6 million that we got in hospital proceeds. Once again, we've talked about adding another million from city reserves, whether that's the general fund, or the capital projects fund, or the community improvement fund. We haven't made necessarily a decision exactly where that's coming from, but we've allocated a million out of reserves. Proceeds that we get from the eventual sale of our current police facility in EOC will help to pay for those costs, with the remaining cost bonding and borrowing from. That's the debt impact that we're seeing. Does not include costs that we paid for from the Jefferson Street extension, Storm Pond. Final cost bonding won't be known until next year. You say, Matt, how do you not know what the final cost of the project will be? Just like any project, and especially as we're finding out now. You have some added costs when you redevelop a site. So, you know, we built into our original plan reserves. And what we just don't know is, are we going to use all of those reserves? Are we going to have to, I wish to say we built the contingency? Are we going to use up all those contingency, or are we going to come in under budget? And that, we just won't know until the project's done.
The reserves that we have today, Matt, how many years did it take to generate that? Do you know? You have any idea?
Well, how long has the city been incorporated?
Since 1850.
But not, somewhat joking, I think the best thing to look at is, go back to the Aquatics Center that we built. We built that in 2017, and we used reserves to build that facility.
Okay.
I think our reserves at, in the general fund is about 62, 63%.
Over 60.
Over 60%, and we built the Aquatics Center. After we built it, I think it dropped down to 52% in our general fund. As we're standing here today, our general fund's back up to 59% fund balance. So it took four years, five years to build.
Did I read something just not too long ago that there's a projection of $790 in over the next 15 years that goes in reserves?
That will go into our community improvement fund.
Community improvement fund, okay, thank you.
For the next 15 years. So, just to kind of circle back around, to summarize a lot of the information, and there's a lot of information, I realize that, from tonight. This is just a look at our current taxation era for 2022. What we want to do is highlight where we've gone from September to where we are tonight, here in front of both the council and the public. What's currently proposed for a tax increase in our general fund is a 3.2% increase. That's roughly $45,000 less than what we had proposed back in September. The biggest change was in our debt funds. Tonight, we're sitting here proposing a $2.34 million tax increase, or tax for our debt funds. That's a 6.7% increase from last year. But it's a reduction of just over $207,000 from what we presented to the council in December. Once again, we've looked at, I guess, restriction our finance with a million dollars taking the reserves to really lessen that tax burden next year and moving forward. EDA did reduce their levy by just over $4,400. HRA has maintained the levy that was presented in September. So we're looking at overall total tax impact when you include the EDA and HRA of about a 4.3% increase from 2021 to 2022, which is down about $216,000 from what we presented in September. Just a couple, just some additional summaries. We're looking at general fund revenues that go up about 2% to match expenses that are going up 2%. Our general tax levy, once again, 3.2%, with the debt levy going up 6.7% with the city's total share increase of 4.2%. Then you include the EDA and HRA, which were responsible for Sayonara Fund. You're looking at a total tax impact increase of 4.3% from 2021 to 2022. So one of the purposes of the truth in taxation hearing is to describe what are the changes in the budget and tax levying. So there's really two of them. One being the general wage and benefit increases, along with staff changes, additional seasonal temporary increases, our expected cost, the city initial $197,872 in 2022. And the debt for the new police facility will increase our debt levy by just over $148,000 next year. Those are the two biggest factors behind a proposed tax increase for 2022. Once again, that 1% levy increase overall is equal to over $76,000 or $54,000 within the general fund. Just to summarize our budget and levy for next year, outside of eliminating the dispatch center, the budget includes no other significant increases or cuts in staffing or changes in service. Staffing costs and capital needs are still the biggest driver of our budget. The new police facility will have a financial impact on the city. We do that, and we agreed to build it, but I think it's important just to highlight that again. Fund balances continue to remain high, and the fiscal condition of the city is healthy. The state's budget forecast has a surplus, it was announced today, $7.7 billion, the highest on record. And there are no anticipated shortfalls for the 2022, 2023 budget. I note that to simply say there shouldn't be any impact from the state that's going to, or any actions from the state that are going to impact us negatively in our budget for next year. Home values continue to increase, and the city is continuing to see growth at all levels. Residential, including multifamily growth, commercial, industrial. Inflation, supply chain issues are impacting the city as well as along with everybody else. And the one thing that we did highlight that we talked about a little bit is we do have that care's money that's coming into us, that's coming into the city that will have, it'll be the tune of about $1.5 million that we'll have to spend the next two to three years, or, you know, two to three years. So with that, it's a lot of information. So really, it's that point of the meeting where, you know, are there any additional questions from council members and/or the public? This is, I guess, that part of the meeting to open that up for any public comments or questions from myself, or I guess for the public, if you have any feedback you want to give the city council. Our next steps will be the council will approve the final budgets and levies after December 28th, city council meeting. So with that, Gary, I'll hand it back over to you. Do you have any comment, they have any questions for us, or questions for yourselves?
Well, like I usually or always say, that I think that Hutchinson provides great service for the amount of taxes we have to pay.
I think for myself, this is the first one, I sat in on this, and quite honestly, during the day, I'm like, I wonder what this is going to be like. Be lying if I didn't say I'm shocked that people don't show up, but yet, maybe we'll hear some complaining. I guess that, that'll really fall on deaf ears on my part if they can't take the time out of their day to come and say something, and maybe nobody will, but a lot of work goes into this. I mean, it, like you said, to absorb all this. I am old, I printed this off, 60 pages, because I need something hard in front of me, that's an age thing. I'm not done looking at it, it's just, you know, it's a lot of information to consume and kind of, I appreciate all the work that goes into it. Again, I can't reiterate that, I'm just shocked no one is here. Again, I haven't been to one before, so I'm guilty.
You know, I think there's two ways to look at it. People either think we're doing a good job and don't want to show up, or there's just your apathy when it comes to local government, in government in general. They feel like their voice don't matter. And I've shared time and time again, it does. You know, I've shared this council, I shared it at the leadership group at the chamber, I've shared it with anybody who will listen. We've had people show up and change votes, and it'll be as minimal as one person. And so if they don't participate, if they don't think it's going to have an impact, it's unfortunate, because I've seen it have impacts. Doesn't mean that every time somebody has something to say that it's going to change the opinion of the elected officials, but I think it's very valuable for both you guys and for staff when we're trying to put together what I call the biggest policy decision the city council's faced with on a year-on-year-out basis, which is that of the budget and tax levy.
That being said, people, I think, do watch it on TV more than, you know, it's a lot easier to sit and turn on Channel 10 and just drive all the way down here, especially when it's not nice out.
What do you mean, this is Minnesota, it's a nice chip.
I didn't mind it, I went on bike ride today, it's fine, but, you know, it's heavy trees out. Yep, but you know, when it's cold out, I think it's easier just to flip on Channel 10 and watch it.
Yeah, but obviously, council's not making a decision. The purpose of this is to get that public input, like I said, whether it's tonight or in the next two and a half weeks or three weeks before you get to the final, final action time.
Well, Pat, as long as you're one of the first time around, I think Matt does an excellent job of explaining everything and, you know, that, so.
A lot of credit goes to Andy and Justin to make me look smart, so.
Matt puts our detail in such a concise format, though. We would be showing you a lot more detail.
See, that's what I like about Matt, puts an alcohol R level, not your.
So I think, like, Andy doesn't make a good point. There's a lot more detail if somebody wants to get that information. And we're always more than willing to.
And as usual, your door is always open.
Yep, we're more than willing to lock somebody through more of the details on whatever it is that they may have interest on.
Well, with that, is there anything else for Matt?
I would, I guess, open it up for any public comment. And we have two people here, and we're more than welcome to come forward and say anything, if they would like to. Or we'll be around.
No, not sure.
Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Carol Johnson, and my address is 550 Liquid Drive Southwest. And I would like to say that you did an excellent job. I did write an article in the paper back after the proposed September levy. And at that time, I thanked Pat May for saying that he didn't agree with it. And I, because I didn't agree with the delay. And I brought out in that article a couple of the points that have, that you have talked about, about how you, how your house gets assessed, and there are a lot of factors there. And so I think you've done an excellent job. I really appreciate that you took that into consideration and looked at, looking at the general fund and seeing if you could help out with that. I also have kept an eye on some of the things that have been going on with the debt issues and with the new police department and stuff. So I am well-aware and well-versed on most of these things that you have done in the workshops and stuff. So I think you have done an excellent job, and I appreciate you looking at the 4.3%. And I was kind of glad that the EDA.
Number 124.
Yeah, had lowered theirs from 9% down to 4.2%. Because it's an acronym, but most people don't know what they do. And I think they would, that really kind of hit a lot of people with saying, what do they do and what are they, what are they actually getting with their 9%? So, thank you.
Thanks. Any other comment? Not Pat? You're welcome to. If not, then have a motion to adjourn.
May I motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to adjourn. Truth in taxation meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Host, carry. Thanks everyone. Thanks, Tom.